Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council the order by rule of policy that council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Leach, who's excused tonight. We'd like to thank those who are visiting with us or in person tonight in the city chambers. I hope you feel welcome. Feel free to participate. If you'd like to participate on any item, just fill out a card and present it to the clerk here, and we'll note that at the time. We'd also like to welcome those who may be home viewing with us tonight and any those who may be joining with us by some other device. We'd like to invite those who'd like to join with us in. In prayer tonight, we've asked Councilmember Kelly if he would open with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance with Councilmember Critten. Would you please stand?
Our Father in heaven, dear Lord, I do thank you for the beautiful mountain that we have the privilege of living on. I thank you for the city of Cholo and surrounding communities. And I thank you for the fact that we seem to be getting along really well. We'd ask that you'd be with us tonight, our deliberation, that we would have clear minds and do that which is best for our community. Ask that you'd bless and watch over our men and women who are serving in our armed forces, that you might bring them back to a safe. Guide and direct, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly, and Councilmember Critten. Appreciate that. Tonight, we'd like to begin with a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city?
It was lower than the estimate.
We appreciate that.
Any other questions? Not all look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to award the construction contract for the Fourth Avenue water line replacement project, City of Cholo, Project Number W-0715, to Apache Underground in excavating an amount not to exceed $140,385.
A motion is seconded by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you, Shane. Next item is Item 7B, consideration of approval of scope revision to 2016 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of public roadways, slurry seal, City of Cholo Project R-0416. Mr. Hymasaw.
Mayor, recently at the May 3, 2016 council meeting, a construction contract was awarded for the 2016 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of public roadways, or a slurry seal contract. Our project number R-0416 to Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed $327,874. This work includes installing polymer-modified asphalt slurry seal, an asphalt fog seal in certain areas, and pavement marking installation after the slurry seal's been placed. Unit pricing for the polymer-modified asphalt slurry seal is among the lowest the city's seen in the past five, seven years. Based on the low bid and remaining available budget, the prior and prior to this contract of starting the work, staff identified several additional roadways to include in this year's slurry seal. The addition of these roadways eliminates miscellaneous sections of improvements and returns them to their respective neighborhoods' normal schedule for a slurry seal. Now, the additional roadways are North 13th Drive off of Owens, North Sixth Street off of Olin Road, North 16th Avenue, south of Olin Road, or south of McNeil and north of Owens, and a city-owned parking lot at 20 North Sixth Street. The additional quantity of slurry seals, approximately 10,800 square yards, result in an additional cost of $11,448 based on the current unit price. Following discussions also with council, the staff identified additional locations for installing roadway pavement markings on Cholo Lake Road, Cub Lake Road, and West Whipple Road in town. These areas will not receive a slurry seal, but would benefit from roadway paint improvements while we have a paint contractor in the area. The pavement markings will be replaced in these areas at a total cost of $10,040. Staff recommends approving the scope revision to the 2006 rehab and rejuvenation of public roadways, slurry seal, Project Number R-0416 to Southwest Slurry Seal for an additional $21,488, resulting in a total project cost not to exceed $349,362. Just some maps, and they're being shown up there right now, and I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, are there any further negotiations required with the contractor to increase the scope, or is it built into the contract that if you want to do it, we can just do it?
MAGA allows you to adjust quantities in a bid up to 20% up or down, and then when you reach that point, you can, you use unit pricing to dictate those changes agreed upon between the contractor and the city. And if you go beyond that, then you can renegotiate the price. We're not getting near 20% at this point, so it would be unit pricing. And they've agreed for the extra work.
Normally, they want that, right? An extra, I mean, they bid it at a price they're making money per yard, and so they like more yards. Is that true?
He was open to more work. Yeah, he said, "We'll take it on." So, yes, he agreed to it.
Sounds like a bargain.
Because of the publicity that ADOT has presented concerning their contractor not meeting specifications, have we checked and ensured that this contractor is going to meet specifications for the city?
Actually, today was the first day the slurry seal contractor started making his mix and putting it down at Fairway Park. We've already pulled samples of his aggregate. We're running that and saving that as we speak. We'll have those available, results available very soon. Tomorrow, we're going to pull some wet samples, which was, they're going to slurry over a minute, pull it out and test that and see what we're getting. So, as soon as he started, as of this afternoon, we're pulling samples, and we're going to check and see what he's doing as well.
Okay, very good. Any Councilwoman Kukavas?
Shane, help me understand. You have in here, "The addition of these roadways eliminates miscellaneous sections," and then you cite a number of different locations, and it returns them to their neighborhood schedule. What is that schedule versus, how does that reflect on the schedule for them?
You bet. So, our pavement preservation plan is set up for every, that every road in town gets hit every six years with a surface, slurry surface, and crack sealing and patching. A lot of times, what happens is there's a water line project, or sewer line project, or something that is going on where we have to skip an area in a subdivision, and we leave out a little pocket. And eventually, over time, we've developed more and more in these pockets, and we're trying to go ahead and get those back in, just go ahead and slurry them, and then maybe three or four years from now. But at least it'll be back on track with the normal neighborhood, so it's not as random, and the whole neighborhood and whole areas are getting handled at one time. That's kind of what we're doing, so... Did I answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I'm concerned, though, because I've driven down North 16th Avenue a number of times, and that's really crumbling up in a number of places. I know we've struggled with that street quite a bit, and so...
North 16th, oh, this is North 16th between Owens and McNeil, north of the park.
Okay.
Right in there.
It's a different area.
But that area does actually need a little work before they get there as well. So, any of these areas that we've added, our staff is going to go in, do any patching that's required in the big, the bad areas, and definitely put crack seal down. And so, these areas will be crack sealed and sealed up before they get slurried as well.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Alsop?
So, we, we're not even close, well, we got to be close to the amount of slurry stuff that they want to put down. So, if we increase anything, what's our, do we still have, that we can increase maybe another eight or 10,000 square foot of putting more stuff down or not?
We've, we're increasing it.
I know. Do we, do we have, do we still have, I think it was like Councilman Kelly had to say, where's the threshold before they have to re-bid it and stuff like that? So, do we still have some play in there where we can do some more stuff where we need to?
There's definitely play, yeah. 20% of, I think we have almost 270,000 yards now.
Is there a lot of those hidden places that you're talking about where we did patchwork, or we did water line, or anything else like that, that we can try to bump some more in there and get as many as we can? Or is it that we want to just have a, kind of keep a same amount of footage around every year that we're doing it?
It's a balance, because we're going to have to do this again six years from now, and the price could be high, right? But what we do, we looked at the areas that we're doing now, and within those areas, we're just trying to grab what was around this year's and encompass those. So, a lot of that was the same area by the park, 16th, Sixth Avenue was one, and that parking lot that just never got hit, things like that. So, there's always more roads to slurry. It's just, you know, six years from now, then we don't want to have a whole clump of them either. But this is a good price, and it's something we need to take advantage of.
You know, I do agree that that North 16 on the side of Olin Road, that thing is just really, really bad. And then also, Joe Tank Road that we put some stuff on, it just looks like junk. And so, I'm hoping that's coming up within the next year or so, where we can get some of that cleaned up and get them. I know we did a lot of patching up there. I just want, you know, so I didn't know what that would be in this year's or next year's slurry, because we've done a lot of patching down North 16th, north of Olin Road. So, I just wanted to verify that.
We did. And the original construction, and that really wasn't a roadway. It was just millings, and we tried to seal it with a slurry seal, or a chip seal, and a slurry seal. And there is now starting to blow out. We do have now a new amount of millings we've acquired from ADOT projects that we can utilize to kind of better work on these areas. But a lot of those areas need some base work done, too, before we can put that surface back on, unfortunately.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Critten?
I move to approve a scope revision to the 2016 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of public roadways, slurry seal, City of Cholo, Project Number R-0416 to Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed $21,488.
We have a motion seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Your next item is...
Can I ask one more question? Why does the top say $21,000, and the fiscal impact is $349,000?
Yeah, the 21,488, that's the approval of the additional scope. You're right, the total project cost will be the $349,362.
That's just the additional scope. Okay, very good.
Just to comment on that, what we did is, as you know, sometimes we bring change orders back to the council. This is a revision to the scope, so we didn't have to do a change order that you approve it prior to the project being done, because we had time on this one.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next item is consideration of Resolution R-2016-10, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have for the council's adoption tonight, Resolution 2016-10. But before we get to that, I'd like to go through a presentation and review some of the budget numbers that we've been working on since January. If I can get the mouse to work. This just gives the public an idea of the budget process for those of, for those who haven't been involved since we began in January. And one item we didn't even list on this is the CIP, which takes place in the fall. So, staff in the council have been busy for quite a long time getting the budget prepared, and tonight, we're at the point where we're ready for the tentative budget adoption, $52,362,213. And then in two weeks' time, we'll have final budget adoption, and on July 19, we'll adopt the secondary tax rate for the street light. To give the staff and council guidelines, goals have been set to help us set our priorities and decide, determine where we're going to spend the funds that are generated at the city. We have preserve and maintain infrastructure, quality of life, community economic development, organization, and focus future. The first graph we have for the councils and residents tonight is an adopted budget comparison. And these, this data that we're looking at is a comparison from dating back to fiscal year 2012, and it just shows the actual expenditure limitation that was adopted by the councils. And you can see, in 2016, we adopted $59.2 million as our limitation, and in fiscal year 2017, we're at $52.4 million. And this is our adopted budget compared to the actual, the money that was actually spent for each fiscal year dating back to fiscal year 2011. And we, we still have an estimate in there for 2016, because we've still got some projects that we're not sure will finish this year. If they don't, we'll carry the budget amounts over into the next year. We would expect that 42.6 to drop at least a little bit as the year finishes up. And then those projects will carry forward and be in the fiscal year 2017 budget. This next slide shows where the money comes from, 34% in the beginning fund balance, 52% in operating revenues, 8% transfers, and 6% other. For the beginning balance, we have $20,354,311 from savings from prior years, or other financing sources. In this budget, $4 million of unanticipated money for any potential revenue streams that we have coming in that were not identified when the budget was adopted. And any of those activities or transactions would have to come to the council for adoption before they can take place. Then we have inter-fund transfers and operating revenues. And these are revenues that the city will collect during the current, or the next fiscal year. Under operating revenues, it's another pie chart with the breakdown to give everyone a better idea of where the revenues do come from. The local taxes at 35%, and utility fees at 23.1, state shared revenue at 13.4, charges for service, and then intergovernmental fines and miscellaneous round out the bottom half of that. Local taxes, our local sales tax is the largest component. And local taxes, we budgeted at $9.75 million, which is a conservative estimate, around 95% of where we finished, we believe we'll finish the current year. And then we have improvement districts, ID 6 and 7, $572,000, Cholo Bluff CFD, $238,000, and the street light improvement district at $208,000. And we will keep the rate at .1401 for the upcoming year for the light improvement district. On local sales, this is a history going back to 2008, and you can see, 2008 was our, one of our best years for, for local sales tax. And I will say, with local sales tax, our retail is, is outperforming where we were in 2008. The difference that, from what I can tell, is the construction hasn't quite picked back up yet. And this is a monthly report on our sales tax data dating back to fiscal year 2013, to give us several years of history there. For the year-to-date, you'll notice most of the months in the current fiscal year, we've seen increases or improvements over the prior year. The last two months, we've been down a little bit. Overall, for the year, we're up 3% compared to last year's actual, and we're up about 8% when compared to the budget. On intergovernmental, this gives a list of the revenue coming in from other sources for the SROs, major crimes, and on down the list. And as I mentioned before, the new grants, any new grants that, that come in that we have not budgeted for, will bring to the council for approval. For utility fees, we expect the revenues to be about $7.2 million, and we've had, we have those broken down. Water and wastewater rates will increase January 1 of 2017, and that's just our annual CPI adjustment. And for sanitation, we did get the updated numbers from our sanitation contractor, and we'll show a slight decrease in our garbage rates for fiscal year 17, and those will take effect July 1. And the percentage was about 3%, and I think the total works out to between 30 and 40 cents. So, it's not huge, but it's better than an increase.
Let's just back up there real quick. So, what you're telling us is basically our sanitation rates are going to decrease coming up July, going into the new year. I just think that's kind of amazing, the fact that we just completed, you know, spending $10.6 million, but yet, do we think we'll be increasing rates as a result of bringing on the new waste treatment plant in the future?
So, sanitation just addresses the garbage only, the waste management.
I was smelling that stuff over there today. That's, we did our inside-city audit effect. I apologize. I'm totally off on that one.
Yeah. But we, but we will include the wastewater, just based on the CPI.
Okay, on that, do we know approximately what that increase would be to an average household?
On the water and wastewater? I don't have that here tonight. If I can get that to you.
Just, you know, I think just with people, and planning, the sooner that we can prep people, when we have that potential, the better. So, they have a couple of months ahead to plan, rather than just next month, their rate went up.
We can work with Ann and get something maybe in the newsletter, or something the public knows. You bet. And this is our charges for services that we previously listed, our self-insured medical, airport fees, and other coming in through aquatics, our recreation events, dispatching, and other types. Our state shared revenues, when we last spoke, we, we had heard from the state that we were going to be expecting some one-time HERF funds, and you'll notice that that's been inserted in the bottom row of the table here at $57,064. So, that's something that we weren't sure what the number was going to be, but we do have that now. So, that gives us some money that we could use for an additional HERF project if one comes up in that price range. And here's a table giving you some comparable, some history on state shared revenues, and how they compare to the prior fiscal years. Our fines and forfeitures, we expect to come in around $130,000. And all others, our partner contributions, interest earnings, miscellaneous income, $434,306. This pie chart shows the expenditures by type across all funds, personnel being the larger component, and capital. And that's something we like to highlight, is the fact that we're spending the largest share of the pie on capital projects. And this is expenditure by type. So, we have personnel, operational, debt service, capital, and reserves. And as the budget grows, a lot of these are going to grow as well. We like to see growth in capital. And then we've also committed to keeping our reserves built up, and we even added four wastewater this year, too. And personnel, as we discussed in previous meetings, we programmed a 2% cost of living adjustment with the Arizona State Retirement. We're going to experience a slight increase, .01%, and with the PSPRS, a slight increase of .02%. This is a look at our full-time equivalents. You'll notice there's an increase of 2.4 from 153.9 to 156.3. We added a person for the wastewater treatment plant. We added an officer for get-'em, and then we added .4 for some part-time help out at the airport. And this is a breakdown of our full-time, well, all of our personnel by service area. And here's a breakdown of our capital and contingencies, $16.6 million. Notice in the Police Department, built up for the public safety building, and streets, and wastewater and water, with all the CIP and projects that we have planned for the upcoming year. And council contingencies remains at $250,000. Here's a breakdown of our operating reserves with the goal of two months' operational revenue. And we've added wastewater operations this year to $206,000 from zero last year. And we had originally planned to have a full two months of operating, but based on the council's recommendation, we took a look at our debt service and decided to use some of that money that we had programmed for operations reserve to pay off some debt service. We were able to pay off our, one of our loans for the manhole replacement project that was scheduled for completion in '28, '29. We were able to pay that off 13 years early. So, we're able to retire that debt ahead of schedule. And then in addition to these reserves, we have reserves set aside at $1.2 million for the water treatment plant, and we've been adding $100,000 to that each year. This is a look at, at our debt service by fund. So, for general fund, we have all of the outstanding debt listed on this table. And this is a different format than we've presented in years past. It's, we felt like it would be a good idea for the council to be able to see the original face value of, of the debt service when it was issued, the rates, and the monthly payments, and then the total. And this is for general fund. And then on page two is the debt service continued, and it's for the water and wastewater combined. You'll see the wastewater treatment plant on that list. And here's a bar chart with our total outstanding debt, and then the blue is, at the bottom is for the improvement districts. And there's a nice trend heading downwards for the coming years, and that'll just depend on what the city decides to issue for projects that are coming. The water treatment plants is one probably in the next few years that we'll have to add to this list. This is expenditures by service area, and does not include self-insured medical, the unanticipated dollar amount that we talked about, or transfers. And this is the breakdown of general fund, what the tax dollars are used to pay for, and it gives you a good idea of where the tax dollars are being spent throughout the community. What's next for us? We have the tentative tonight, adoption of R-2016-10. And then for the next two Fridays, we'll have a public hearing advertised in the local paper. And then we'll have final budget adoption and a public hearing on June 21, along with the tax levy, and, or a public hearing for the tax levy, and then the secondary property tax levy adoption on July 19. Any questions for me?
Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you, Justin, and Mrs. Bilby, for the hard work you guys have done for us this year in putting this budget together. I know there's some things we had to do to change and move around, and some of it wasn't pretty easy, and some of it was pretty hard. And so, we just wanted to thank you for taking your time out to do that. And the most important thing, I think, is helping us look where we can find and get some debt paid off. And I really, I like that part of it, too. So, thank you very much for your, your time and your efforts for that.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, chime in here a little bit. Having that debt service plan, you know, broken out, we can see definitely what percentage we're, we're spending in comparison to other years, because a lot of times, your budget goes from $50 million to $60 million to $40 million, and we're pretty much constant on some of our debt service. And, and that's great that it's not, we have a good handle on it and things that we have going. But thanks for your effort. This is a great budget, I feel, that we've presented to, to our citizens in the year coming up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Alsop, and then Councilmember Critten. Councilmember Alsop, and then Councilmember Crittenen.
I'll let him go. I'm not going to make a motion.
Councilmember Crittenen.
I want to second that I've been working with the budgets here for quite a few years, and you and the staff, Kerry, et cetera, working on this budget. It is smoothest and the best presentation and the best working efforts from anybody I've seen since I've been here, as far as the budget process. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alsop.
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty sixteen dash ten, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen at fifty-two million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars.
Have a motion or a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Offer the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass, six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we need to recess into a special meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty sixteen and seventeen for the district.
Don't move.
We didn't.
It's not. I swear.
It's right here.
Thank you, Justin. You're in.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facility District Board to order by roll call. See that all board members are present, with the exception of Board Member Leach, who's been excused this evening. First item that we have of business is a consideration of resolution number R two zero sixteen dash oh one, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, board members. What we have for the board tonight is adoption of the tentative fiscal year twenty seventeen budget for the Cholo Bluff CFD. The dollar amount is two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. For some background on the CFD, the district was formed in two thousand and five, has a separate unit of government. Debt was issued and must be covered by district's assessed value. Total of two point nine million dollars was issued. Three components there. There was a special assessment, a little over two million dollars, and then two general obligation bonds totaling a little over nine hundred thousand. Recap of the assessed valuations, it's dropped significantly since inception, dropping sixty-eight percent since two thousand and ten. On the positive side, it only dropped five point seven percent in the current fiscal year, so we're hoping there'll be some more activity and cause for it to start increasing back in value. We're not sure what's going to happen there. So we have two separate funds. We have the special assessment bond, and then we have the general obligation bond and operations. First, we're going to look at the assessment bond. As I mentioned, a little over two million dollars. The annual debt service, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred, for a total of two hundred and twenty-seven parcels. And Cholo Bluff Development currently owns a hundred and twenty-seven or fifty-six percent. We have an unbudgeted reserve of two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's for the assessment. For revenues on the assessment, we do billings for those in June and December. In June, it's principal and interest, and in December, it's interest only, and we expect the revenues to be a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred. Moving to the GO or general obligation bonds, as I mentioned, there were two issued there in 'oh seven for four hundred and eighty thousand, and in twenty eleven for four hundred and fifty thousand, with the total tax rate of three dollars and fifty-five cents, three twenty-five, or three dollars and twenty-five cents for debt service and thirty cents for maintenance and operations. And we will note that the amounts collected for the taxation for the general obligation bonds is not enough to cover the debt service in two thousand and seventeen. The annual debt service is ninety-eight thousand. Due to mainly, the main problem with the lack of revenue from assessment is the drop in assessed valuations. We do currently have unbudgeted reserves of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four. Our beginning balance for the GO was five hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. And I would like to point out on the property tax that this number had changed. I think in the packets that were sent out, it was seventy-eight thousand, which was a number that was carried over from the prior year, which we found that we wanted to change it to what the actual number for the revenues collected would be, instead of counting on back taxes and penalties and other things, which the other number was based on. So tonight, we need the board to adopt the resolution, to adopt the tentative budget, and then we can move on to our final budget adoption and tax levy in the public hearing on the twenty-first. Any questions?
Councilmember Crittenen.
I'd like to point out a couple of things, since, again, we've been on this board. For people here that have not been here before and exposed to this, these are not city funds. The city is not liable for any of these funds or any of these payments. This is a totally separate board that's sitting here now versus the city council, and these funds are provided by Cholo Bluffs. They are not provided by the taxpayers of the city of Cholo, other than residents of Cholo Bluff and some of the developers there. So do not misinterpret that the city of Cholo, are you living somewhere else other than Cholo Bluff or paying for these things? You are not.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah. Back a few slides. If I read it right, the rate per hundred that would have to be charged to the people there would virtually double if they were going to pay it without using reserve funds. Is that accurate?
Maybe seven point four four debt service.
Yes.
And I understand the hopefulness of, the decline in assessed evaluation is approaching zero decline, it's down to five percent compared to much higher two-digit rates for a while. If, in fact, that trend changes and turns, then each year assessed evaluations go up in there would mean less of a need to take reserve funds to match up with the actual revenue generated to meet debt service. Is that accurate?
That's what we're hoping for.
That's what we're hoping for.
Yes.
You know, it's just, it seems obvious, I guess, to everybody, if not, I'd like to hear the argument why it's not, that this can't go on, as it were, forever unless that assessed evaluation goes up. Okay? We are allocating a very small percentage of the reserve funds. I want the public to understand that, too. We're not, like, taking half of the reserve or a really big percentage of it. It's a very small percentage that this board has taken for the last few years to keep the residents out there from suffering a serious impact on their taxes. And I think most of us would like to be hopeful and see the logic to the fact that this thing will tend to heal itself if the economy continues to increase. If it doesn't, then one day it'll have to hit a pay-your-own-way scenario. And that's, I guess that's what I want to make out. I appreciate Councilman Crittenen making it so clear that this is not a city council sitting here voting to take general funds and subsidize that development. That is not happening. What we're contemplating doing, although the motion hadn't passed yet, is to take a very small percentage of reserve funds, again, this year, and kick in so that the people don't have to suffer those very, very large taxes.
Mr. Mutter.
Let me just talk about that for a minute, and you're very correct, and that's what we've done in the past few years. We're working with Cholo Bluff to create a creative solution to take care of the issue up there sooner than later. In fact, we got a commitment out of the developer. They will pay the difference, so we don't take reserve funds this year. So they are going to pay the difference in the collection of taxes. That's the commitment we got out of the developers, so it should head in a positive direction in the near future.
That's wonderful. That's good.
That's great.
At this time, I'll look for a motion. Board Member Crittenen.
Is there something specific, or I will make a motion to approve? I don't have it in front of me, so never mind.
It's, I'll be, will you defer, and I'll make the motion?
Yeah, I'll defer.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution number R two zero sixteen dash oh one, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year twenty seventeen at two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. The motion is second. Second by Board Member Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass, six to zero. Thank you. Our next item is a consideration of the minutes of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board of Special Meeting of June sixteenth, twenty fifteen. That doesn't make sense.
Don't move.
Okay, fifteen, I'm sorry. I'm thinking that June sixteenth is not here yet. That was a year ago. We have a motion by Councilmember Crittenen. Is there a second? Second by, I'm sorry, Board Member Alsop. See any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass, six to zero. Seeing no other business for the Facilities District Board, I'll adjourn this meeting and go back to our regular city council meeting in a minute. Ready to go into the next session, right? We're back to a regular Cholo City Council meeting at this time. Our next item of business is summary of current events. I'd like the council members to summarize any current events. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing off, I just want to thank all the sponsors for this weekend, for all the events that we had in Cholo. And if I would start naming off the sponsors, I knew I would forget one, so I'm not going to name them. I just want to thank you for everything that you've done and that helped out with the city. In case you, everybody didn't know, there was Cholo Days with Derby Down the Deuce and everything going on in the city park, with wiener dog races and everything. There's a car show going on, Farmer's Market Art Walk, triathlon going on. Police Department was busy, Sheriff's Department was busy, Rangers were busy, everybody was busy. We just hope that everybody had a great time. One thing I do want to say is Derby Down the Deuce this year, we had a new event with the racers, is APS brought in three Derby cars that were, would challenge kids that they can sit in the front, and some adults sit in the back and steer the Derby car and get to race down the track three times. They were dogging each other, saying, "I'm going to beat you, I'm going to beat you." It was a great time for the kids. The adults were laughing, having a great time. And so it's something that we're looking forward to having APS help us with in the near future with some more races and stuff. So we just had a great time there. I'm hoping everybody enjoy themselves. The Farmer's Market Art Walk still had a lot of people show up, so we want to thank everybody who showed up for everything. And we just hope that restaurants and motels have recovered from all the weekends, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I just wanted to say thanks to our citizens as well. I mean, it was a busy weekend, there's a lot to endure. There was also one other thing, there was a big dance festival, there was five hundred and seventy-five youth participated at the Cholo High School, one of the largest events that's happened at the high school on Saturday night, on top of everything else that was going on. So there was a lot of ice cream sold, I know, that night, and it was warm and hot, but we just appreciate. Our Chamber having the, you know, success of a great Cholo Days in Cholo, as well as the car show and the people who put forth. And we have a great community, a lot of people who come out and sponsor and promote our own community that we have, and we appreciate that very much. City manager, for your report.
We did have a lot of events, and we had our Public Works, our Parks Maintenance, and the public safety departments were busy all weekend. With all those events, we had some inconveniences and traffic delays that may have been experienced, and we apologize for those. We are talking to the event organizers to try to move one of those, at least one of those events, to another weekend, so we'll have maybe some better traffic situations around town. But the Cholo Chamber and our crews did a great job this weekend, so we want to thank them. The Project Clean Sweep, that's still ongoing this week with bulky item pickup on your regular trash day. Two of those days are gone now, but the Wednesday and Thursday pickup days, it's still available. You need to place your items in front of your residence by seven AM, so the city crews will pick them up. We also offer free dumping at the Lone Pine Transfer Station this week, from hours of eight AM to three-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, and eight AM to two PM this Saturday, June eleventh. You'll need a proof of residency from showing that you have current refuge service or a valid driver's license with physical address in the city limits. And it's a great program, and I think we're in, I don't know what year we're in, but we've done it for a number of years, and it's helped, really helped clean up the city. If you wanted more information on Project Clean Sweep, if you have questions on that, five three two forty-one hundred. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, the contractor began a slurry sale project in Fairway Park. Fairway Park scheduled this week, so you'll, the residents will see a door hanger if they're going to be in their neighborhood approximately forty-eight hours in advance of a street being treated. A complete schedule is posted on our website. It could change depending on weather conditions or unforeseen circumstances, but if those changes, will be posted on our website. And a related project, we've mentioned here a couple times before, the US sixty Dusa Clubs, which is owned by, it's a state project. Arizona Department of Transportation is going to do a slurry or a slurry mix project, slurry sale project on that highway. They haven't been having problems with their mix design, but it's tentatively scheduled to resume this coming Monday, June thirteenth, and that's subject to change, but that'll be a little bit of inconvenience, but after they're complete with that project, the Dusa Clubs will look great again. From Parks and Rec, there's another community yard sale this Saturday, eight AM to noon at the city park. Those booths are ten dollars each. And also on Saturday, as has been mentioned, there'll be a Farmer's Market Art Walk from nine AM to one PM at Festival Marketplace, and that's a Main Street project. There are over sixty vendors this season, and that will go through September twenty-fourth. And finally, the library's summer reading program kicked off last week and runs through late July. The program is open to readers of all ages, and the deadline to sign up and participate is July eighteenth, so visit the library on that if you are interested in that reading program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I just want to thank our city manager and our economic development director. We were able to go to Las Vegas to a big convention that was up there this past, well, two weekends ago, and they had sixteen appointments that we met with different developers over the two days, and so there was a lot of positive things that came from that, different people looking at Cholo. It's definitely a place that a lot of people have in the future radar. Our area is definitely being looked at, and it's neat to see that there's some more excitement of looking at rural areas than there's been the last couple of years when we've attended that conference. So I just appreciate their efforts on setting up those appointments and making that happen. That's what drives our economics in our community. We appreciate it. Scheduling meetings, anybody want to schedule anything special? Scheduling meetings, anybody want to schedule anything special on the Fourth of July weekend that we're off or anything? Nope? Okay. We do have an executive session that we need to go into tonight where we will discuss a little Colorado River adjudication right of use of water, and that's what will take place in the executive session. I need a motion to move into executive session. Have a motion by Councilmember Hatch, seconded by Councilmember Alsop. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? And policy that passes six to zero. This time we'll move into executive session. Thank you again. Thank you again.